Yeah, take out eighteen and nineteen and pop this one in.
Okay, cool. Sorry.
That's okay. I'd like to bring the City of Riverbank Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, to order. Call to order. Chair Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner McKenney.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
And Commissioner Vilepoudoir.
Here.
Conflict of interest: any planning commission, authority member and staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflict. Any conflict of interest? Public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, you'll need to state your name and city of residence. Please address the entire Planning Commission Board. Is there anyone at this time that has a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commissioner member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Item two point A, posting of the agenda. Item two point B, approval of the agenda. Item two point C, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion, Commissioners?
Hope to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Chair Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilepoudoir.
Yes.
Moving over to item three point one, Nana Farkey, Stannasos Cheese Proposal for Architectural and Site Plan Review, application number zero two dash two zero one five. Donna Kenny, please.
The applicant is requesting the architectural and site plan review of additions and tenant improvements to an existing milk and cheese processing facility, including a small retail area. City services currently serving the site will remain unchanged, including water and sewer. City staff has determined that the proposed additions and tenant improvements are exempt from CEQA pursuant to section fifteen, three oh one of the State CEQA Guidelines related to existing facilities. Property is located at three one one two Santa Fe Street, APN one three two dash zero one one dash zero six zero, and is zoned M1 light industrial. The general plan designation for the site is MU mixed use. The property is within the downtown specific plan, which designates this property as downtown general. Okay, as I mentioned, this is the architectural and site plan review application for tenant improvements to an existing milk and cheese processing facility, including a small retail area. Here's a photo of the project location. This is the existing site where you see that marker that says A, that is actually the building itself. And then there is some open space to the right side, a little bit to the rear where the alley is, and then a lot of pavement at sidewalk in front at Santa Fe. Here's the existing facade, so you can see why the facade improvements are necessary. This is a nineteen seventies building where the overhang really overshadows the rest of the building. Here is the site plan. The applicant has been working with city staff to provide a varied frontage with some landscaping area. Right now, this, there is curb gutter sidewalk here, but it's not up to code, and so the applicant is working on handicap parking. He's been working diligently with staff to get this done. Trucks are intended to come through the public alley, make a turn. This is on the property on the side of the building. This is where the milk will be unloaded. It's covered for safety and health reasons, and then they would be coming out this existing driveway to Santa Fe. Here's a picture of the floor plan. This is the new little retail area, so our locals can get some of these good sheep cheeses. This is part of an aging area. This is new, the six hundred square feet that they're adding on. This is a milk processing facility, restrooms. You may have noticed in the staff report, there is no restroom in the retail area. This employee will need to follow the safe path of travel out to reach these restrooms in the rear. This is what the new elevation will look like. This front area here is the retail area, and it actually sticks out about five feet further than this aging area here. They both have new storefront-type doors, replace the lighting with some nice lighting on-the-wall fixtures, awnings, some articulation along the roof line, and also some Wayne Scott here. Okay, the code requires the planning commission find the project consistent with the general plan. The general plan designation is mixed use. Areas, the mixed use areas with a mixed use designation in the existing developed city would accommodate a similar mix of land uses as the new areas of the city, including the processing and retail of dairy products. The property is zoned light industrial, M1, which allows the manufacture of dairy products, and has a downtown specific plan designation of downtown general, which allows the retail use. Therefore, the project is consistent with its general plan designation and zoning. In addition to our standard conditions of approval, planning staff intends to review and approve any fencing design, pots, and the plant and tree pallet before installation. And as we discussed with, in the staff report for this project, but also the recent clinic project, the downtown specific plan calls for comparing a previous use with a new use and determining if there's any deficit parking spaces between the two. The clinic, if you remember, had had a deficit of four parking spaces, and this project has a deficit of three parking spaces. Therefore, there is a condition that when the city council adopts a parking in Luffy for the downtown specific plan area, this project will be required to pay for three parking spaces. As far as the CEQA, the environmental, it's categorically exempt under Guidelines Section one five, three oh one, existing facilities. This exempts additions to existing structures, provided that the addition will not result in an increase of more than fifty percent of the floor area of the structure before the addition, or twenty-five hundred square feet, whichever is less. The building's existing floor area is four thousand fifty square feet, and fifty percent of it equals two thousand twenty-five square feet. So the additions at nine hundred and thirty-five square feet total are less than fifty percent of the structure. You may have seen in the staff report that I did reference another environmental section as well. That came from my accident with the computer. I stepped on my power switch and it shut down, and then when I brought it back up, I was just so pleased to see that these documents were still there. I didn't read them carefully enough to notice that I had some problems, and so for that I apologize. But this is the one, fifteen, three oh one, existing facilities. So we recommend that you find the project is categorically exempt under Class One CEQA Guidelines, one five, three oh one, existing facilities, and approve the architecture and site plan review based upon the findings contained in Resolution twenty fifteen dash zero two one. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have the applicants and the engineer as well, and thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I just have one. This, this would be considered a wet industry, right?
I'm sorry?
Oh, this would be considered a wet industry. This is going to impact our waste, our wastewater. This is a cheese, a cheese processing plant?
It is a cheese processing plant, and he has already applied for a solid waste disposal permit through the planning, through the Public Works Department, and it has been reviewed and approved and signed by the city manager.
Will this be our, the only one? I thought that we were phasing that out. Will this be the only wet industry here in downtown?
Well, there is an existing one on the same block farther down, but as far as I know, this is the only one that has applied since I've been here.
Thank you.
No further questions on my part.
Anthony, any questions?
Um, it said there was an existing cheese and wine, um, a cheese plant there, or that we had here in the city at one time?
There is right now.
Okay.
It's at the corner of Second and Santa Fe.
Okay, so the existing water, because, you know, we are in a drought situation here. What type of water are you going to be using? Will it be reclaimed water, or will it be just continuous use of fresh water to, you know, disposition whatever waste in manufacturing process?
I would, we can have the applicant speak to that, but I would believe because of food safety laws, it would be all potable water.
Okay. Okay. We'll leave that for the applicant to answer.
Thank you.
Okay, no further questions. I'd like to open the public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak to this project, please step forward.
Yeah, I'm Nana Farkey. I reside in San Luis Obispo. I am a retired professor of dairy technology. I worked at Cal Poly for twenty-five years and decided to change careers and doing this currently. You asked about water use. Typically, in a cheese plant, you use about a gallon of, two, three gallons of water for every gallon of milk you bring in. And of course, it has to be potable water, and this is going to be a real small facility because we're doing high-end specialty cheese products. We don't anticipate to bring big trucks here to, to impact anything. We're gonna, the sheep don't produce as much milk, yet they fetch high dollar for the price of cheese, so we don't anticipate using a lot of water at all.
Can you come a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you a little bit better?
Oh, maybe I'm speaking a little bit too fast.
Did everybody catch him?
I did.
Yeah. After teaching for twenty-five years, I'm surprised you don't hear me.
Any questions for Mr. Farkey?
Will these be tankers coming in?
No, no. Milk is going to come on a flatbed truck with an approved trailer that's, the sheep don't produce much milk, so we, yeah.
They have to be sanitized.
They have to be sanitized. We're going to go according to good manufacturing practices, following the FDA guidelines as well as CDFA guidelines.
Which means you use extra water, right?
Well, again, as I said, the rule of thumb for any dairy plant is that you use a gallon to three gallons of water for each gallon of milk you bring in.
And then the wastewater goes?
The wastewater will be collected in a, a tank, which will be treated before it's disposed of.
Is there any special flooring in that area where the trucks come in? You know, where it's covered?
Okay, we are not bringing trucks in.
Yeah, you said a flatbed.
Well, it's essentially, it's like a pickup truck.
Okay, so leave out small stuff.
No, this is, yeah, yeah.
Teriority.
No, no, I don't anticipate that.
The little driveways and stuff, you know, because after time, you decide, just like how the, you see the car wash stations, you know, after a while, they roll the same.
Yeah, but you're talking of car wash with cars and cars and cars.
But we're talking about trucks.
Again, it's, it's, it's a veh, it's a vehicle. I don't know, like a ton or less than that. Let's see, it's, it's not a truck. I mean, I guess you're looking at a tanker truck, which are huge, six thousand gallons. Sheep don't produce that much milk. Sheep would produce at the max a gallon of milk a day compared to a cow that produces like twenty-five gallons a day.
Wow.
Let's see, so it's, it's not, I mean, at the most, we'll get maybe six hundred gallons of milk. It's not a whole lot of milk, yet for profitability, for cheese making, a gallon of milk will give you a pound of cheese, if you're using cow milk. For sheep milk, a gallon of milk can give you at least two and a half pounds of cheese, and you pay premium for it. So that's why this project's of interest.
Evaporation process and stuff like that?
We are, we're not doing any evaporation at all.
Nothing that emits out into the atmosphere?
No.
You was going to explain this.
Yeah, my name is Sergio, a project engineer, and you, you had a question in regards to traffic and what have you, and, and so what we've done on this project is, we created a canopy over the area where the truck unloads and loads. Right where it says proposed canopy, it's, we have one there, and then also there's one in the rear. So the purpose for those canopies is such that when the truck comes in, in case of a spillage, if you will, we didn't want that, we don't want that to mix with rainfall water. So we went ahead and did that canopy for that purpose. We don't anticipate spillage of milk because it's, it's expensive, but we're going through the different safety scenarios. As far as, as far as the amount of, of traffic coming in, we anticipate the trucks, the delivery truck, to come in, in the early morning, and unload the milk, and that would be the daily process. Are you going to have it afternoon?
How many trucks per day, you think?
Why? Again, as I said, sheep don't produce a lot of milk, okay? But it's almost like buying an expensive piece of raw material. So the, the farmer, the sheep milk farmer is going to deliver the thing on a, on a flatbed truck, which holds maybe two to three hundred gallons at the most.
Small, small quantity.
It's a small quantity.
What's your customer base like?
Well, if you're into Whole Foods or specialty cheeses close to the Bay Area, I mean, some of these cheeses could cost thirty dollars a pound. So customer base could be you. You might want it.
Do you have like a retail, I think you had like a little retail spot?
Well, that is a requirement of the City of Riverbank that we're trying to work with the city to accommodate the city. If you ask me personally, I don't want it, but the city wanted it, so we're trying to accommodate the city.
Notice that, you said that there was only one bathroom that's way over there?
There are three bathrooms in the building. As a food plant, we cannot allow outsiders to get into the food facility to use the bathroom. So when the City of Riverbank wanted us to have a retail space, then we had to find a bathroom within proximity that would allow whoever is going to be, come in to buy products to use that, I mean, to use that bathroom. So, and the city also required us to have a handicap path of travel, so that in case the person is handicapped, and, and I'm not opposed to that because I could be driving tomorrow and something could happen. So I'm, I'm okay with that. What I said was that if it's going to be an impediment, then we don't need to have that retail space.
What do you mean by that?
Well, I'm by an impediment. In other words, if the city, and, and Donna's been gracious in working with us, and John Anderson, okay, so they were able to work with us to get it to such that we were comfortable, but I'm just telling you what initially was that, okay, you have to do this or that. And I said, if, if we absolutely have to do this, and you're not willing to work with us to make sure it's, we can do it properly, then we don't need to have a retail space.
What's properly?
Well, properly just means that it meets our economic needs, and it meets the city's requests.
I'm just making, I'm just trying to see, is there any, are there any regulations about restroom facilities or something like that? It has to be within a certain footage or something like that?
No, these plans have been reviewed by our inspectors and found to be legal.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
If anybody has any further questions as far as engineering for this, I'd gladly answer.
Any further questions for the engineer, for Mr. Farkey? No? Okay. Donna, is there anything else you can add to this project? For the Commissioners?
No, I think we've pretty much shared everything. As he mentioned, it was the city's asking for the retail space, and he accommodated us because we thought, you know, we have the Wine and Cheese Festival, we have locals who may want the cheeses and not be able to travel to the Bay Area, and so, he was very accommodating, and so we worked with him on the restroom issue.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. So can we hear from the Commissioners regarding a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, oh.
Close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, at this time, we'd like to close the public hearing. If there's no one else that would like to speak for or against this project. Okay, Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty fifteen dash oh two one, the adoption of the architectural site plan review, zero two dash two zero one five, for the Stannasos Cheese.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Chair Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilepoudoir.
Yes.
Item three point one passes unanimously. We'll move over to item three point two, solar permit procedures, ZOTA, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you. Okay, this is an ordinance, oops, I should read it off of here, right? Okay, state mandate requires the city to adopt an ordinance for expedited permitting procedures for small residential rooftop solar systems. Okay, Section sixty-five, eighty-five, zero point five A of the California Government Code provides that it is a policy of the state to promote and encourage the installation and use of solar energy systems by limiting obstacles to their use and minimizing the permitting costs of such systems. In furtherance of that objective, Section six-five, eight-five, zero point five G one of the California Government Code requires that on or before September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, every city, county, or city and county must adopt an ordinance that creates an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar energy systems. So part of removing those obstacles is to review and issue permits over the counter, to review and issue permits electronically, and to develop a checklist of all requirements needed for expedited review. As part of our customer service in the City of Riverbank, we currently issue solar permits over the counter. We will accept documents for review electronically, and we perform expedited reviews upon request. The project is categorically exempt under State CEQA Guidelines, one five, two six eight B one, ministerial projects, issuance of building permits. So the next step would be, if you approve this item, we would go to waive the first reading of the ordinance with the city council, then go to the second reading of the ordinance and adopt it, and the ordinance would become law in thirty days. As I mentioned, this is a state mandate that where we are required to do this, but fortunately, the city was already working on the streamlining processes, so it's more of a housekeeping matter for us. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Actually, is the permit, what does that cover for, for, you have to, this is like an addition to a, this is residential, right?
Right, this is a solar system on top of a residential roof.
So it's like a construction type of permit, or?
Correct. It is issued at the counter by Cheryl. She's the first one you encounter when you come in the building, and I believe Janet sometimes helps with those.
So is this considered, once it's attached, a fixed part of the property or non-fixed?
Not.
I don't know.
I mean, it's, it's attached.
I've seen a house that's sold, and they say you have to take the lease along with it, so that looks like a fixed thing.
Yeah, I think it's generally a fixture to the property, and I don't think you can remove them. I haven't really seen that happen.
Because you're leasing it, so.
You can lease it or buy, depending on.
Well, yeah, you, you can remove them and have them move because it's the property of the original owner or whoever purchased it, right?
Right.
So, is there any clause that, that particular type of, it's just like, what I'm saying is, is there a particular clause, like if you add a bedroom, that bedroom's going to stay even though it's added, right? So if you add this fixture which is causing, which is, requires a permit, but it's, it's attached, then, you know, is it specific that it's an attached, or is it fixed?
Permanent or non-permanent?
Right.
Generally, the law with regard to fixtures is that when you have something that's kind of wired into the building, it's, it's part of the property, and, and generally, when you sell it, you would sell the property with all of its fixtures attached. So it would be kind of an uphill battle if someone wanted to say, this is my, this is my system, even though it's totally wired in, when they, when it got time to sell the property.
Only reason I ask is because the issue comes up. As, as a Realtor, I, we just ran into this, and it becomes an issue where, you know, you get a permit for this particular type of attachment, but the seller will remove it and take it with them unless the buyer requests that that stays. So if we're offering, so if we're issuing a permit, are we taking that particular type of equation out of it because we issued a permit? Permit usually stays with the property if it's permitted, right?
In some cases, for example, I purchased a house that had a spa with it, but found out the owners were taking it with them, and so I ended up with a concrete pad and a electrical panel and no spa.
Right, because the concrete pad had to have a permit for the foundation, so that anything could have went on the foundation, that's why they took, so in this case, if the solar is part of that, but then you can remove it, then there's, you know, what is the permit actually? the permit actually for?
Well, the thing is, someone could build a patio, it could be rotted and they tear it down and then they want to rebuild it, then they'd have to get a new permit to replace the one they tear down. So, I mean.
Just a thought.
I would think that you'd expect it to be permanent and to stay there, but I can see where in some cases, if it's a lease and the person's moving and the new person's not going to pick up the lease, I can see where they would probably want to remove it.
But it's required to have a permit to have it.
To install.
To install, yeah.
Correct, because you'd be hooking into electrical.
So, basically, you're just going through the permit process just to install this since there is no other.
Anything with electrical involved, plumbing.
Needs permit.
Needs permit.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff?
A quick question on the approving. The, the individuals that are approving are folks that have gone through some classes in this?
We have a plan, a person that reviews the plans.
Okay.
Site plan checker.
Okay. Gives you the feedback on, okay.
Is that all? And we can open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak to this matter? Item 3.2, solar permit procedures. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to. Any questions from the, any further questions, commissioners, on item 3.2?
Nope.
Okay. Then we'll leave it open for a motion.
I'd like to make a, a motion to resolution number 2015-022, recommending to the city council the approval of the amendment of the title, is that, what is that roman numeral there?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, Land Usage, Chapter 150 Building Regulations, Adding New Section 150 dot 16 C, Expedited Permitting Procedures for Small Residential Rooftop Solar Systems.
I'll second that.
John, I left that on the table for you. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vilebodwa?
Yes.
Okay, moving over to item 3.3, Galaxy Theater LLC, Conditional Use Permit Number 02-2015, and Resolution 2015-018. Project description, Donna?
Yes, this is modification of Conditional Use Permit Number 01-2013, Galaxy Cinemas Riverbank. It's a request to modify Conditional Use Permit 01-2013, Resolution 2013-006, to remove language in condition of approval number nine, Class 41 License, On Sale Beer and Wine Eating Place.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Do you want me to present?
Yes, please.
Okay. As I mentioned, they're seeking a modification to the Conditional Use Permit to remove beer and wine size cup restrictions. The project location is Galaxy Theaters. A little bit of background for the at-home audience. On September 16th, 2008, the city's Planning Commission approved Conditional Use Permit Number 02-2008, allowing Galaxy to conduct the onsite sale of alcohol, beer and wine. The operator chose not to implement the use approved under CUP 02-2008 and the CUP expired in 12 months. Galaxy reapplied for CUP and was granted by the, it was granted by the Planning Commission on September 17th, 2013. A condition of approval was placed on the project. Number nine, the retail sale of alcoholic beverages shall be by the glass. For purposes of this condition, a glass of wine consists of six ounces and a glass of beer consists of 12 ounces. This application to modify CUP Number 01-2013 requests the restrictive language in Condition Nine be removed. As you see, we have struck out, for purposes of this condition, a glass of wine consists of six ounces and a glass of beer consists of 12 ounces. Pursuant to Riverbank Municipal Code 153 dash, or point 216C, in order to grant and therefore modify any use permit, the applicant must introduce evidence in support of his application sufficient to enable the Planning Commission to find that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use or building applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use, or be detrimental or injurious to property improvements in the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the city. The applicants had submitted a survey in which they contacted businesses near the Galaxy Theaters to determine that El Ranchito, Cool Hand Luke's, La Perea, El Rosal, Applebee's, and Red Robin are allowed to sell beer by the cup without restrictions, some at 16 ounces, some at 24 ounces or more. So, none of those listed businesses have alcohol restrictions where Galaxy Theater is restricted to 12 ounces currently. Another nearby business, Modesto Starbucks, I have their menu up there now and as you can see, they are going to start, or they are selling wine. And in fact, it's a little difficult to see, but they are also selling wine by the bottle at Starbucks. But my understanding is you cannot get it at the drive-thru.
I try.
It's coming.
And here is a photo of the Galaxy's menu. As you can see, that the, the beers are comparable in prices to what the Starbucks had, as is the wine. At the last meeting where this was, this item was continued, we did discuss ABC regulations and Galaxy does have it posted in their facility that alcohol limit is two drinks per transaction. We had some discussion about whether it was transaction or per person, per night. Okay, so the recommendation is determine that the applicant has submitted sufficient evidence for the Planning Commission to consider removing the size restriction, find that the project is categorically exempt under Article 19, Section 15332A through E of the SEQA Guidelines, and approve the modification to Conditional Use Permit 01-2013 pursuant to the findings and conditions contained in Resolution 2013-006 and attached Resolution I would like to mention, I did notify the police chief that this was coming back. I emailed him and he emailed me thanking me for keeping him informed. And just wanted to mention that in my numerous visits with the applicants in preparing this staff report, their whole focus is to be treated like other businesses in the area. They believe that while the other businesses do not have restrictions on the alcohol cup size because we let adults make decisions, they feel they should be treated the same way and not have those restrictions. The applicants are here tonight and so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or we could reserve them for the applicants as well.
Any questions for staff, commissioners?
I'm here.
Okay, then we'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone speaking for or against item 3.3 can come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. It's good to be back here again.
Good evening.
This is the 15th year, believe it or not, that Galaxy Theater has been in Riverbank and very celebratorious, something to celebrate because right now, we're constructing an IMAX theater there along with the other 12 theaters and that's something you normally find, as we've talked about before, in a metropolitan area such as San Jose or Pleasanton, but that's something you usually find in Riverbank. So, we're excited, this is going to be an exciting year for Galaxy Theaters and all of Riverbank too. And if you have an opportunity tomorrow morning, Frank Rimkus at nine o'clock will be speaking at Galaxy Theater. The Chamber is sponsoring this and he'll be talking about what this means to Riverbank as far as business and attracting business.
So, before you continue, may I ask you for the public and our audience to please state your name?
Oh.
And your, your address, where you're from?
Sure.
And also, give us an idea of your relationship to this matter, please?
Yes, I'm Rich Homer. My address is 2116 Park Ridge Drive, Riverbank. I'm a consultant for Galaxy Theaters.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Homer.
Sure.
Please.
Okay, a couple of things I'd like to talk about. When the Conditional Use Permit, a lot of cities don't have Conditional Use Permits that deal with alcohol. For example, Modesto does not have such a permit. Someone who is going to serve alcohol there will talk to the city and then go to ABC or Alcohol Beverage Control. That's why we have ABC, that's why we have Alcohol Beverage Control. It's their purview to place certain restrictions on, or conditions on places that serve alcohol. About 10 years ago, when this CUP was put into effect, the rationale behind that wasn't, we didn't say when Red Robin came here, well, Red Robin, you're going to have to serve 12-ounce glasses of beer and 6-ounce glasses of wine. The commission never dealt with that. When a taqueria came here, that was never brought up. Any place that serves beer and wine, that's never been part of the rationale behind the CUP. But the reason we put this in as a Conditional Use Permit is that at that time, there were some bars, the Cattlemen Club, if people remember that, Garcia's, and there used to be a, a club over on Stanislaus Street, and the name slips me, where there was gunfire several nights, that were serving alcohol to minors, that were, where prostitution existed, where drugs were being sold, where gun running was occurring. And actually, I went to one of these bars one day, invited by the chief of police at the time to go over there, and they actually were slaughtering a goat in the bar. So, the reason was, in some instances, ABC would not react quickly enough, but with a Conditional Use Permit, that gave the city the option, when these type of occurrences were happening, we could react quickly to that and basically close down the bar, and we did close down the one bar. As you know, the Cattlemen's isn't open anymore, Garcia's is gone, and the other one now sells, I think, vacuum cleaners or, it was right on the corner of First Street and Stanislaus. So, the rationale never was to limit the size of, of alcohol served, that was left to the individual establishment and the ABC, Alcohol Beverage Control, and the name says it right there. When Galaxy Theaters came to the commission for the first time, there was a number of people who were here who were stating that, you know, they were opposed to this, that a lot of horrible things would happen. And what you have to remember is Galaxy's been doing this since 2005. There's 15 theaters throughout Washington, Nevada, California, and Texas, and I think all but two of them serve beer and wine. The, because this was something new, and, and people have their concerns when something is new, and I understand that. When there's a change, when change happens, people, you know, are not used to that. It's like first time when I went to California Adventure and saw they were serving wine there at Disneyland. And that's very common, bowling alleys, they serve beer by the pitchers. City doesn't restrict things like that. So, what we wanted to do when we accepted the 12-ounce beer and the 6-ounce wine was to show that in fact, we would serve it responsibly, that we would ensure that it was done correctly, that there wouldn't be any problems that occurred. And in talking with Frank Rimkus, the CEO is here with me tonight, there has never been any incidences that are alcohol-related that have occurred at any Galaxy Theater that serves beer and wine, never. And, that's, is that correct, Frank? Yeah. So, what we're asking is that after you approve this, we still have to go to ABC and we still have to get their approval to make these changes and on the size of the servings, and that is their responsibility. It is the ABC's responsibility, Alcohol Beverage Control. The Planning Commission has this as a tool when we have prostitution, when we have serving of minors, when we have drug sales, and that is the reason behind this alcohol in the CUP in the first place. Galaxy's been a great neighbor, it really has. It has allowed a number of nonprofit agencies to hold functions there, to raise funds. It, for example, right now, the Chamber of Commerce has a advertisement on the board about the Chamber that's seen before movie screenings. And, for example, this year, Galaxy is helping sponsoring the cheese and wine and I guess craft beer exposition, I think it's added something on. So, Galaxy always steps to the plate, it always steps forward and it always has, and it will continue to. But what we're asking you is that we really believe that this condition needs to be removed from this, and that we'll then go to Alcohol Beverage Control and work with them, as has Red Robin, as has Applebee's, as has El Ranchito, as has El Rosal, as has La Perea, as is everyone who serves beer and wine, and soon Starbucks in the crossroads will be serving beer and wine. And the other thing too to remember as, as we expand Galaxy and attract more people, and the historic number of people that have come to Galaxy Theater over the 15 years has been 440,000. This year, Galaxy Theater is anticipating, was it through August?
Through August.
Through August, they've had 650,000 people attend the theater. And so, when you put in a 452-seat IMAX after that, the opportunity for other businesses is just amazing. And there's two vacant parcels there. You know, I talked to Daryl Broman today and he, hopefully he's going to be at this meeting tomorrow, he was excited to hear there was an IMAX coming to Riverbank. And it's really establishing us as a unique centerpiece for Stanislaus County, where close to Modesto, Series, Escalon. The service area is just exciting to me. And what that means too, for the City of Riverbank, is more property tax and more sales tax, and that's your general fund dollars, and with that, you fund your police, you fund your recreation, you fund the really important services that you can't fund otherwise. So, I have nothing more, if anybody has any questions or if Mr. Rimkus would like to say something.
I have a question, Mr. Homer. Can you differentiate between your last visit and your request, your last visit to, to this visit and the, the change in the request from Galaxy Theater in, in this Conditional Use Description?
Well, the thing was is, after I left, I started thinking, and I don't know if any of you were, perhaps you were, but it was J.D. Hightower who put this into existence. And it wasn't done. And it wasn't done, it had nothing to do with the serving sizes of beer or wine. That's left up to Alcohol Beverage Control. What it did have was the other things I spoke about. That's where the issue came up. It was for places that served alcohol but were also doing things that were patently illegal.
So, specific to your, specific to your request to modify the original request to modify, last time you were here, and the change between that and now, could you, could you define that for us, please?
Right. Go ahead. Okay. All we're asking is that we be treated under the same plans, same goals that every other business that serves alcohol in Riverbank, under the general plan is. At this time, we're not.
Would that be all? Is there any other questions for Mr. Homer?
Can you kind of elaborate, because it's IMAX, right? So is, is it exclusive to an area, is there a, so like, if we have an IMAX?
We will have one.
Okay, we're going to have an IMAX. Does Regal get an IMAX as well?
No.
So, what kind of territory are we covering here?
I believe it's, what, 40 mile?
That's IMAX proprietary.
Yeah, it's a proprietary relationship. There's a certain, specific area, for example, Manteca could not have an IMAX, Modesto could not have an IMAX, Turlock cannot have an IMAX, you know, Series cannot have an IMAX, Escalon cannot have an IMAX, probably it could go as far down as Mer said. So you're the only game in town, and that's going to draw a lot of people into Riverbank.
Specific for this item 3.3, we can say that this, this request has nothing to do with the IMAX theater.
No.
That was just a point of reference, he was, he wanted some clarification
Certain.
With regard to the IMAX. But why we're here today is that your request to modify the conditional use permit.
That is correct, Madam Chairman.
And, and with that, at this time, you're not requesting any, any cup changes, other than you don't want any reference to cups at all?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay, just for clarification for the
That's correct.
For the commissioners.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this item 3.3?
Chair Hughes, a member of the Planning Commissioner. As you know, I'm Jill Anderson, I'm the City Manager for the City of Riverbank. I'm here this evening as a staff person. I did want to make a comment, I'm in support of the staff recommendation, and some background perspective on, on this. When the Planning Commission, as a City Council, as a city, has a specific role to fulfill, we are designed to do certain things well. We provide public services well, we provide water, sewer services, provide some planning guidelines, land use control. But sometimes what happens is when any organization tries to expand its mission beyond what it's really designed to do well, is that it starts to compromise what its core mission is, as well as have unintended consequences in the areas that they're trying to be, do good things. And usually, the intentions are excellent, and they're usually good things that they want to expand to do. But if you don't have your foundation correct, or if you go beyond really what you're designed to do well, it can have unintended consequences. And in my 25 years of experience, and that cities do a lot of things really well, but there are other things that were really not designed to do well. And one is to operate a private business that is in business to make money. And that it is best to leave those decisions about specific details of a business operation to the actual business. Because what happens is that, sitting as a committee, or sitting as an organization, considering all these things, is that it misses sort of the purpose of a private business, and that is to respond to a market demand. If people like going to Galaxy Theater, they will like, they will go there, and they will spend their money there. If they don't like the experience of going to Galaxy Theater, they won't go there anymore, whether it's because the popcorn costs too much money, or they don't like the movies, or, you know, the seats aren't as comfortable, whatever. So I'm guessing Brendan might be having some of that experience right now, because we're noticing Galaxy's increasing in market share because of going to the luxury plus seating, and everybody says, "Hey, have you ever sat in one of those chairs?" So people are going to Galaxy because they like the experience of going to Galaxy. If that changes, they'll go someplace else. Brendan has found that out, right? Those, those other, other movie theaters, we're picking up market share, they're losing market share, that's a sign. The market will tell them where they need to put their investment. So if another movie theater wants to compete, they're going to make the investments there to be able to compete, and that's the beauty of business. We start telling them how to compete, it doesn't give them the ability to respond to the market. And since there is another agency that is specifically designed to control alcohol and has set forth guidelines that apply to other businesses in the area, it seems that we would want to be very cautious about overstepping what our roles are. Understanding that, as a Planning Commission, there are land use issues, and the focus is land use issues. The social and financial issues really are not, while may have some general information, aren't necessarily the decisions that are before the Commission. And people have strong opinions on various, a lot of people have strong opinions on growth, and whether we should grow or not. People have strong opinions on alcohol, and whether or not people should drink alcohol. Those are decisions that people can make for their own self, that they, adult responsibility for making choices. And so, I would just ask the, the Commission to consider the staff recommendations, and the philosophy behind it, and the reasonableness of the requests before you this evening for a business that generally has, has been a good corporate citizen. They have a track record. And that is an important pattern to watch for. In addition to that, in any situation, you look for track records. And by having the, kind of the trial period of a couple of years to serve, we kind of got a chance to see how it's working out, and so far, it seems to have been working out just fine. People have been responsible, they've been responsible business people, and, and that has, has gone better than some people might have expected. So, taking that into consideration, if the track record had been different, if there had been multiple incidents associated with the serving of alcohol, I probably would be coming with a different comment. But things have gone into place, and the business is growing, they're expanding, they're investing in the Riverbank, they have a vested interest in making sure they run their business in a way that creates that luxury plus experience. So, with that, I am happy, I'll be happy to address any questions that might come up as a staff member in support of Donna and Janet. But I did want to, I did want to speak as a staff person to the recommendation that's being made tonight. I'd be happy to address any questions.
Any questions for our City Manager, Jill Anderson?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against item 3.3, the Galaxy Theater? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I have a question for, for staff, please. So, just as a point of reference for clarification, Donna Kenny, can you read the section of the, the resolution that is different from their original request for the public and for the commissioners, please?
That would be condition of approval number nine. I'll go ahead and put it up on the screen. The item reads now, "The retail sale of alcoholic beverages shall be by the glass. For purposes of this condition, a glass of wine consists of six ounces, and a glass of beer consists of 12 ounces." The request is, number nine, "The retail sale of alcoholic beverages shall be by the glass," with the next sentence removed.
Thank you.
Can you read the, the next sentence, please, for the public?
"For purposes of this condition, a glass of wine consists of six ounces, and a glass of beer consists of 12 ounces," removed.
And that would be stricken, then, from, from the resolution, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any question for staff or legal at this time?
No questions on my part.
No questions?
I have a comment, though.
Okay.
I respect all the views of everyone that spoke, including the City Manager, Jill. But I personally, and I'm sure everybody else up here, feel that the Planning Commission has a very important part in the planning of the city, is implementations of city, businesses, policies, town, and procedures, and that, I feel that our role is there to see it from the first start, see how it affects the community as far as traffic. I mean, we look at what an individual business is going to bring to the community. Is this community, is this particular business in line with our specific plan, our, our growth of the city, the type of community that we want to display? I believe that's our role here, to maintain that platform. When we see a business is bringing in a lot of traffic, is that good traffic, or is that bad traffic? You can have a lot of traffic coming in that brings in a lot of degenerate type of traffic. Do we want to make sure that we make the proper steps in the beginning to limit that? I think that's what our position is here for. So, I, I think we play a very important role in the, in the implementation of a business, how it's going to affect our community, how it's going to affect our citizens, and we are the voice of our community and our citizens. That's it.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Any other questions for, for legal or for staff? Any, any more questions for Mr. Rimkus, or Mr. Homer, or Ms. Anderson?
None here.
Okay. So then, commissioners?
Okay, I'll do it. I move for approval of Resolution Number 2015-018, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Riverbank, approving a modification to Conditional Use Permit 01-2013, Resolution Number 2013-007, to remove language in Condition of Approval Number Nine within the General Commercial C-2, Zoning District PD-42, located at the Galaxy Theaters, 2525 Patterson Road, Riverbank.
I second it.
Roll call vote, please. Chair Hughes?
No.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Vileboudois?
Yes.
Passes 3-1. Okay, we'll move on to number four, Commission Items. Item 4.1, please. Annual Stanislaus County Planning Commissioners Workshop, to be held Saturday, October 10, 2015, City of Series Community Center, from 8:30 to 12:30 p.m.
Now, I've probably heard this, but do we know what the main topic is going to be at this workshop?
I believe it just has a general title of Planning Commission training, so I don't know exactly what the training will be.
They do focus, you know, sometimes on different themes and things like that, so, but it's certainly always a worthwhile experience for the workshop, definitely.
I was thinking of, at the next Planning Directors' Meeting that I attend, where this is discussed and put on, that maybe they should move it to January or February, because we have commissioners going out in December, and so we're training people who may be leaving. I think after our commission is new, they should have the training then, and so I will --
That's a valid point.
I will make that recommendation at the next meeting.
Okay, great. So number five, any correspondence or referrals or information? Nothing added on? Okay. Number six, upcoming meeting agenda items, no action, by the way. Item 6.1, Ward Villas, infill project that would require a general plan amendment, rezone and planned development.
That is a small subdivision over there at Ward Avenue and, is it Roselle? And Roselle? We are, staff has distributed the materials that they provided to outside agencies, and we just got the comment letters back. So we're still working with the developer on creating a good package to bring before you. One of the sticking points is that the city is only allowed to do four general plan amendments per year. My understanding is that they might possibly piggyback together, so you could actually have more projects, but we are at three already, and we'll be needing the fourth general plan amendment for our housing element, which has just about gone through HCD. And so, we'll either try to piggyback the Ward Avenue project on, if it's ready to move forward when we have the housing element completed, or he'll have to wait until 2016, when we get our new rush of them. And so, we are still working on that one.
Is that that empty lot right there on Ward?
Yes.
There's one house on there right now?
Yes.
And item 6.2, Diamond Bar West?
Well, that kind of goes along with 6.3. We have two developers working on Diamond Bar West. One is doing the final subdivision map. We have some of the materials, but not a complete application yet. But we have had the city engineers start to look at some of the improvements, because it does take time to look at those. And then we have a second developer doing the architectural and site plan review of the houses. I'm hoping that they'll have something to submit within the next week or two, so we can get moving on that as well.
Great. Item 6.4?
That's an ordinance, an ordinance amendment I'm working on to add e-cigarettes to the tobacco ordinance. I believe it was a request by City Council to do so.
Okay.
I'm hoping to bring that to you in, possibly, well, I don't know, it doesn't have to come to the Planning Commission, right? Because it's another part of, it's not part of the zoning code.
It's just the city ordinance?
Yes.
It's not part of zoning, I'm not sure.
Right, so that it probably doesn't come to you, but this is, you know, a way of informing you that there is something else going on.
Okay. Item 7.1, the Crossroads Shopping Center?
That is Pad C. So far, we have received three tenant improvement plans for Panda Express, Chipotle, and Dicky's Barbecue Pits. And we don't have
Perfect timing, dinner time.
And, we talked about Pad G, correct? No? We have plans, yeah. Also, there's Pad G, America Tire, that's coming towards Crossroads. We're working with them on their architecture review right now, and trash enclosure, and where they're going to keep their used tires, that type of thing.
Wasn't AT&amp;T also going to be looking at one of those suites?
We haven't received anything yet on that, so any plans are T.I.'s middle, so.
Okay.
Is there anything else? Any other announcements?
Well, there'll be one more restaurant and one retail, but we don't know who they will be yet.
In that same suite?
In Pad C.
Pad C.
Pad C.
At Diamond Bar East, Regal.
Okay. We also did get some improvement plans in for Diamond Bar East, but it's an incomplete application right now. That one will take a little bit more work than the Diamond Bar West, because that project will have some contribution toward improving a railroad crossing that's near it. So there'll be some extra work involved with that one.
Okay.
But we have both sets of improvement plans, and as soon as they're complete applications, we'll get going on those.
Wonderful. Is that it, then? Okay, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion that we adjourn?
I'll second that.
The Tuesday, September 15, Planning Commission meeting for the City of Riverbank is now officially adjourned. Thank you so much.
Can everybody remain seated for a second? Jill, can you, can you come take our picture?
You just might.